Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I'd like to call this Monday, October 9th, 2023, meeting of the Lake County School Board to order. If you're watching at home, I apologize for the delay, and also to you all in the room. We had a very legal, a very riveting legal presentation beforehand, and no surprise, the lawyers had trouble keeping it to within the time constraints. So, thank you for your patience. With that, as we come to order, we'll begin tonight with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. So, if you would all, please rise for that. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Start off tonight by taking a look at the agenda. Superintendent, do you have any additions, changes, amendments, or deletions to it?
We do. The agenda was revised with the chairman's permission for just cause on October 3rd and 4th to add items 9.07 and 11.04, changes to 8.08, 9.05, 9.06, and 11.02 in the fiscal impact and removal of item 8.07. There were revisions made today to the attachments and a memo in item 11.04, and the board has a copy of that.
Excellent. Board members, do you have any items that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda tonight for separate consideration?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. Very good. Then we'll move on to our approval of our minutes, please.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the executive session for school safety, September 25th, 2023, and the regular school board meeting, September 25th, 2023.
There's a recommendation with a motion by Bill. Anybody want a second? Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions or comments before voting on that one? Not seeing any. Let's vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And that's unanimously 5-0. I don't see any items under representation tonight, so we'll move into the public input segment of our meeting tonight. We do have a few cards there. We'll start off with Kim Cronin. Welcome tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Myers, superintendent, and board members. It's been a minute, but you seem all to be doing fine. Tonight, you'll be voting on the SEIU tentative agreement, which includes pay raises and some other good things for employees. A lot of work went into this. We worked from early May up until the end of August on this, this contract. You know, we had an overwhelmingly yes vote, but we also had very low voter turnout. So, that wasn't great. You know, not all employees are happy. We had the $15 mandate last year, which put a lot of employees at $15, whether they're coming through the door, or whether they've been here for 10 years, whether they're being a bus monitor or a school secretary. So, and I know that that's, you know, a problem that the state needs to fix, and if they ever will, who knows? They don't seem to recognize school staff. But I think that we, we did work on the new pay scale this year, and I think that we did separate some of these issues. So, there is still a lot more work to do, but we'll just have to work through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, salary compression issues have always been a challenging one, so we appreciate you and the district for trying to put some good heads together to figure out how to begin to solve that, and we look forward to continued work together. Thank you. Next up, we have Bobby Russell, Jr.
I don't really know how to start this. It's been an ongoing issue for several years with the faculty at Taverius High School trying to dismiss an ag program that has been in place for many years. Every school in this district needs an ag program. They need, they need to teach these children about life skills that they are not being taught anywhere else in the school. You have children that spend thousands of dollars to buy animals to show at the Lake County Fair through their school. Some of them were told that they weren't going to get to show their steer on Friday night before they were to weigh in Saturday morning. This is very upsetting. It took a lot of work between me, the school board, the parents, and everyone to get this straightened out. I don't know if y'all are, some of y'all are and some of you aren't familiar, that every student that went into an ag program this year in the state of Florida was automatically an FFA member nationally. Okay? There was a grant that was put in place to take care of that. We have had several teachers that came forward that are certified to do the job at Taverius High School so that they can proceed with their CDEs, which brings cake money to the school. There are several schools that a former teacher set in place and showed how to get this money. There was, there were several teachers that applied for this job that were trained to do the exact same thing, and they have their certificates and the education to do it. They were turned away. For what reason? I'm not 100% sure. I don't know. But they were turned away. We've been put with substitute teachers to teach these kids for the last two years since Jessica Holland left and went to Mount Dora to be a science teacher. The last three years she was at the school, she tried to get help from the administration. They fought her tooth and nail because they wanted her out of the school. They don't want to have to deal with it because it has an off-site ag form, and the teacher has to have a CDL to drive the bus from the school to take the students to the ag form. A lot of the schools get through this. They have no problems. They have people to back them because they have an alumni. Okay? We had an alumni at Taverius. We had people in place to take care of things that needed to be taken care of. It was done away with. It's still on paper that they have one. It's still written on a piece of paper somewhere. They don't contact anybody in the, in the industry.
All right. Thank you. I think, you've got his phone number. You've got, appreciate your comments tonight, and we'll make sure that you'll have an opportunity to connect him. Thank you. All right. The next, next few cards, I believe, are all, all related. I don't know if you have a particular order in mind between Karen, Letty, and... We'd like to go first. All right. You must be, are you, are you Letty? All right, all right. Next up is Letty Ortega, please.
I'm gonna be, I wanna translate.
Oh, okay. Sure, very good.
My pregunta, yo fui en ante la escuela de mi nieto, lo encontré afuera en el driveway. She went to school this morning, and she found her grandson in the driveway.
In the parking.
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot. In the parking de la escuela, con cuatro profesores, cinco niños.
There were four teachers and five kids, five other kids.
Fui a la oficina de la escuela a preguntarles qué pasaba porque mi nieto estaba fuera, y la miss Warner dijo que nosotros estamos exaltados cuando no es verdad. Vean los videos si es verdad o no.
We, uh, she went to the school later and asked the principal, somebody, that why the kid, her grandson was in the outside with a, with four kids, I mean, with the other, four child and, and the teachers. And...
Miren los videos.
And, and she went, and they said that we were, we went, and then we went, again, she took me there, and, and we went to ask why the kids were outside. And they, they said that we were, we were, uh...
Elevator.
Elevator. And, and she wants, she wanted to check the, the videos to see if we were, we weren't in the elevator. We were just asking questions why the kids were outside, Noah was outside with the, with the teacher. They told us that there was a drill, and, and I asked why a drill, you only do a drill with five kids.
Porque miss Warner hace ver a los hispanos problemáticos cuando no es verdad.
And she was wanting to know why the, miss Warner, see the Spanish people as problematices. We just wanted to ask questions. That's it. And we, we didn't, we didn't get no answer.
Mire los videos, va a ver que yo no estaba exaltado.
And she wanted you to check the videos that we were in the elevator, and that we were just asking questions.
Ahora tú dile. A ti te toca hablar. A ti. Tu solamente tienes que decir que tú colaboras en que es la verdad.
Have you all...
Oh, I'm next.
Oh, okay. Sure. Have you all had a chance to get your questions answered? Did you have a chance to talk to somebody yet?
Wait, what was that again?
Did you have a chance to ultimately get your questions answered yet?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So, you are, what's your name?
Publio.
Publio. Okay, yes, I see you. Publio Alvarez. You're our next speaker.
We just want you to check the, the videos and, and see that we weren't, you know, we weren't in elevator, you know, and we were just, we were asking questions. That's it. Because why the kids, why Noah was outside, and he was cold, and, and that's it. I mean, I wanna, we want to know.
Okay.
We didn't get no answers.
All right. Thank you. And, and Ms. Ortega, are you related to this, this incident? The same, same thing? Okay. All right. Karen, would you like to be next? And then, then I think we'll be able to perhaps get you directed to some folks that might be able to answer your questions for you regarding the drills. So, next up is Karen Ortega.
Good evening. I'm gonna share my three minutes with my son Noah. I want my son Noah to give his information of how he was treated in school. Please let them know what happened with Miss Meany.
When we were, when we were doing something, we didn't know the answer of what we were doing, and we were trying to find the answer, and he went very mad and yelled at us and put our head down, and the three of us, the name, the three of us were friends, and the names were Manuel, Kate Palmer, and me. And she yelled at us and put our heads down on our desks, and I didn't like that.
Okay. So, I wanted to, I wanted my son to personally share his experience because those three children are minorities, and this teacher is a teacher's assistant, the last teacher's assistant that I had, that I, and I wanted to meet her. I requested to meet her because I feel that as a parent, I should have the opportunity and be afforded with an opportunity for me to meet whoever is surrounding my son, and that opportunity was stripped from me and not provided in order for me to meet the person who spoke to my son that way, so I can have an opportunity to explain to her that my son has a disability and that she needs to be more patient with my child. Okay? In addition to that, the last year, the last teacher's assistant had disparaging comments to say, not only to my face by saying that I'm a terrible parent and I shouldn't be a parent, but then, in the report that was afforded to me by the district, I read that Ms. Bell, a teacher that allowed my son to have a wet shirt the entire day after another child poured water on his back, was allowed to remain in class without a change of clothes, and I was not informed of that as well. So, then, I'm here asking and imploring, as a single mother, as a mother, as a woman, as a peer, whatever it may be, that this is taken care of because there's no reason why a child needs to be having discriminatory behavior from teachers, and I need to be insulted by teachers when I go to the school. I conduct myself exactly how you see me today. I'm not pleased, but I'm not disrespectful. I do not say things that are vulgar. I behave myself in a professional manner, and I demand that I be respected as a mother and treated fairly and treated without any discriminatory, because the last time that I was, that I'm aware, my son was told that he couldn't speak to other children when reading books because something regarding Martin Luther King. Okay? And that my son understood that he shouldn't mix with black kids, and I don't like that either.
I appreciate you coming tonight and your family as well for sharing your, your comments with us. Okay. And I understand conversations are, are happening. So, thank you. Our, brings us into our report section of our agenda tonight. The first is the Education Foundation, and I think I saw Casey Edmondson out there. Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Casey Edmondson. I'm here tonight on behalf of Carmen Cullen. Our Apple Mart store has had 258 teacher visits so far this school year, which equates to approximately $40,000 worth of school supplies that have been distributed. Public supermarkets recently donated just over $30,000 from their Tools for Back-to-School Register campaign. This supports our Apple Mart stores, and they are now listed as one of our presenting sponsors for our stores. We recently received a donation from Happy Plants, which is a local nursery in Apopka. We have started to get these plants out and shared with some of our schools, and we still have several more to deliver, so we're thankful for those. This Friday, October 13th, we'll be hosting our Scotch Strong Golf Tournament at Harbor Hills in Lady Lake. This year's presenting sponsor is the Hans and Kay Jacobson Foundation, along with VMG Mechanical and Electric Services Incorporated. This event is sold out, and the proceeds support the Scotch Strong Memorial Scholarship Fund. Our Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair will be held next month on November 3rd, 4th, 5th, 11th, and 12th, and many of our local schools from Lake County and beyond are actually coming to our fair on Education Day, which is held on Friday, November 3rd. There are many special events that are posted, as well as our entertainment schedule during the fair, and you can find more information at lakerenfair.com. We also have a few updates on some grants that we have recently received. The Harper Family Foundation was awarded to us in the amount of $5,000 for the Taverius High School Transition Program. The Mount Dora Community Trust was for $2,000 to support the Criminal Justice Program at Mount Dora High School. And then Disney awarded us $25,000, which is earmarked for CTE and culinary support in our schools. Our Take Stock in Children program recently held their corporate spelling bee on September 21st. This event was deemed a success, although we're still crunching our final numbers to see how much we raised. First place went to our Education Foundation Board of Directors team, which was a shock for all of us. Second place went to Leesburg High School, which is sponsored by Brown and Brown Insurance. Third place went to Mount Dora High School, which was sponsored by Charles B. and Mary M. Micklin Foundation. The Take Stock in Children program had a campus tour last week to the University of Central Florida and Lake Technical College. Students had the opportunity to learn about different degree programs at UCF and Lake Tech and explore the campuses. At Lake Tech, they were able to see firsthand the certifications that are offered, including auto repair, welding, cosmetology, and many more. The application cycle for our Take Stock in Children program is open until January 15th. This scholarship and mentoring program is open to eighth-grade students who meet the program criteria, and our next Board of Directors meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 25th, at noon at the district office. Are there any questions?
No questions. All right. Thank you very much. Turn to Mr. Myers for our attorney report.
Yeah, all I have is, is following up on the, the workshop. If you all want to discuss this at the 1016 workshop further, then if you want to get questions to me by Friday, is that doable? Like some of the, the other firms and have them respond by then?
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. About our consent agenda, please.
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.12.
Here's our recommendation with a motion by Bill and a second by Tyler. Any questions or comments on this one before we vote? All right. Not seeing any. Let's put you to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carrie's 5-0. A few discussion items, most notably because they involve some travel for a school board member.
Yeah, we have a request for outside the district travel for Mr. Brandenburg to attend the Ford School Board Association's annual joint conference, November 28th to December 1st, and a similar request for Mrs. Cunningham to attend the same conference. Because both these requests exceed $500 and it involves travel outside the county, the public has an opportunity to weigh in on these requests. So, if anyone here would like to speak to either one of these, if you'd please come forward. Seeing none, if it's appropriate to make a recommendation.
All right. Well, I recommend approval of items 11.01, 11.02. That is travel to the FSBA Annual Joint Conference for Mr. Brandenburg and Miss Cunningham.
All right. Motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. Questions or comments on those? All right. Looks like we'll send you on your way. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right.
Up next, we have a public hearing for tentative approval of policies 2371, Hope Scholarships, 2410, School Health Services, 2410.01, Mental Health Services, 5410.01, Promotion Acceleration Placement and Retention, 5500, Student Conduct, 5513, Care of School Property, 5517.01, Bullying and Harassment, and 9800, Charter Schools. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward to speak to any of these tentative policies?
Where are the policies?
The policies are posted on, on board docs. It's kind of our interactive agenda system. You would like to speak about one of those policies? All right. Very good. And you were, you were Karen Ortega. Yes?
My son Noah attends Taverius Elementary, and Noah has had a record of eight incidents where Noah has been pushed to the ground in Taverius Elementary. So, whenever I hear bullying, for me, it's very important because when I tell my son defend himself, my son replies to me, "God doesn't support that." So, to me, I don't see my son being the, the cause of these issues, and it has been other children that have come to push him to the ground. So, it would be very important for this to gain the attention that it needed to help the children who have disabilities, children who don't stand up for themselves, to be protected because some teachers, while they're there, don't always assist, and they're short-staffed. So, the children are the ones that have to endure, and after, and Noah, for a prime example, these incidents have happened back to back to back to back almost. So, it affects the mental stability of my son, and I would hope that sharing this would help you to kind of streamline these, to assist those children that need the most because after all, they rely on you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ortega, I can give you a copy of, of the tentative policy 5517.01. That's the bullying harassment. I'll, I'll give it to you after we're done, but you'll have a chance later on, there'll be another public hearing for final approval of those policies, too. So, if you've got any questions, comments, you come back and make those in. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to any of these policies? Seeing none, if it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. Superintendent?
Recommend tentative approval of the policies as presented.
There's our recommendation with a motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. Any questions or comments before we vote on these? All right. Not seeing any questions or comments. Let's vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And those carry 5-0. Next item is 11.04, which includes the amended superintendent's employment agreement. That's been posted on board docs, and also you have a copy there at, at your, your place. You all had tasked me with the opportunity to go back and negotiate with the superintendent on her contract following a series of, a number of years of very positive and successful evaluation results. And so, with that, the agreement we present in front of you tonight, superintendent and I worked on, it includes a year extension to the contract. The other notable changes involve adjusting the salary increase to match that of other 12-month administrative employees, and we cleaned up some evaluation deadlines that would enable the board to complete the evaluation in a timely manner before the closeout of the, of that particular year. With that, I suppose I could field any questions, but I'm gonna guess that this recommendation doesn't come from the superintendent. Or does it? Does she recommend approval of her own contract?
I have one question, just to clarify. In Section 16.2, we're, you're proposing changing to a supermajority vote. I just want to clarify, is that a supermajority vote of those present or of the entire board?
Of the entire board. So, we, we looked at some statutory basis on that and using the, the similar model for the county commission on what defines that. But yes, that's the other notable change, that now without cause, termination of the contract would require a supermajority vote of, of the members. With cause, that's still a majority vote.
Great work, Mr. Dodd. Great work.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. With that, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, that we approve this document.
All right. Motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. Any other questions or comments? Boy, I'm sure we could just, you know, all speak very positively and loudly about the leadership that you've brought to this district, and so we are, we are very, very thankful, and with that, we are very proud to offer this back to you. So, with that, let's put you to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? 5-0. And I believe that brings us to the end of our actionable items on tonight's agenda. So, with that, we'll move straight into your report.
All right. Well, we have a couple of letters of condolence that were sent since our last meeting to the family of Johnny Retlin. He's the father of Angelita Russell, who's procurement and contracting manager in our procurement department, and also to the family of Ronald Sane. He's the brother of Tamara Sane in our transportation department. She's our data entry operator there. So, condolences to those families. I also want to just extend my thanks to this amazing community who have rallied around the family of one of our students from Ipanema, New York, after the tragic accident last week. It was a, it was a tough week for all of us, most especially for the family and friends and the, the school community there, and just the outreach and the outpouring of the love and support for that family has been tremendous, and so I just want to thank the community for the, their support of the family, as well as Lake Manila High School, and to the leadership there and all the, all that they have done to support this family as well. So, I'm very grateful to them. And also, I want to congratulate East Ridge High School. I'm not so sure if you noticed, but, or saw this, but they were ranked among the highest in U.S. News and World Reports 2023-2024 Best High Schools in the Nation. So, these rankings are calculated for schools based on students demonstrating outstanding outcomes, based on college readiness, state assessment proficiency and performance, underserved student performance, college curriculum breadth, and graduation rates. So, congratulations to the faculty, the staff, and students at East Ridge High School. So, go Knights, and certainly proud of them, and that's all I have tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all that information. And we'll go down the line for some board member comments. Bill, you want to kick us off?
This is very quick, and it's also on the, on the coattails of the superintendent about the community of Lake Manila High School, and Hawks are just amazing, these young men and young women that rallied to support their, their fellow students, but not, not just them, the, the football game, that the parents were asked if, if they wanted to still, for it still to go on, and the answer was yes. That East Ridge also wore his colors, and I think that's a testament to all of our young people and one that whenever you say that, or you talk about our kids today, I assure you, we have some amazing citizens and great future leaders. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo those sentiments. I had the chance to attend that football game with Mr. Dodd and the superintendent. The outpouring was incredible. Neither team had orange in their, in their colors, but there were so many kids on both sidelines wearing orange, which was Sherman's favorite color, and just the, the support in this county has been really special to see and certainly warranted. One other quick item, Mrs. Cunningham and myself had the opportunity to attend an FSBA conference a couple weeks ago on policy governance and collective bargaining. We learned a lot there, and I think I'll speak for both of us in this one, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but every time I go to one of these FSBA conferences, I come back so encouraged and so appreciative of our senior staff, our superintendent, and our district in general. We are always the, the shiny examples in so many things on, on how we do things, how we continue to operate and be as proactive as we can in a very uncertain landscape, and just very appreciative of the district we have and what we're doing to keep that moving in the right direction. And moving from there on to the collective bargaining side, wanted to give a shout-out to Kim Cronin, her team at the SEIU, and also Chad Farnsworth, Guido Zamora, and the entire human resources team at our district on another relatively quick bargaining process, getting done early in the school year, and just appreciate the continued collaboration across the aisle and just doing what we can for our teachers and our students. So, thank you for the work that you all continue to do and the work you'll do moving forward. It is appreciated.
Indeed. All right, Stephanie.
So, just to add on to a couple of things, on Thursday night, the Eustace High
So just to add on to a couple of things, on Thursday night, the Eustace High School JV played Lake Maniola, and I believe it was Sherman's birthday that day, and both sets of teams also wore purple, which was his favorite color. And so again, the community rallied around the support. It was interesting to me that when all the Eustace kids showed up in purple, so it really was community-wide remembrance of him and supporting him and his family, and so it was felt all the way on the north end of the county, which was special. I would also like to throw kudos to Frances. So when I looked over to the left, we have been dealing with a couple of different issues throughout the last two months. I feel like she's been a go-to for me. And to reiterate Mr. Brandenburg's comments, I think that the staff goes above and beyond often for students in this district, and I know you've come to the rescue at a couple of different schools on this end of the county for me, and I appreciate it, and I've enjoyed the conversations that I've had with you and Mr. Ward as of late. So a lot of exciting things happening, a lot of great things. Again, I don't want to be redundant, but there was a lot of contract things that happened in this agenda that there's to be proud of with compensation for people that are working extra hard in this district, and it's nice to feel that we finally proved some things to give back. So, thank you.
Are you mine?
You know, you can always think that you are doing a good job and that you're doing things well, but when you have something to compare it to, then you truly can say, you know, that we rise above the others and we stand out as a district that does a good job. So certainly, I share the sentiments of everyone, and I certainly agree with you, Mr. Brandenburg. I felt very proud to put my little name tag up that said Lake County. With that said, you know, I, I want to say to our two, my constituents tonight, because Taverries is my area, so I want to say to you tonight, we certainly do appreciate you coming. You have to make us aware, and I can assure you that all the kudos that we have given to our executive staff, we're going to get some solutions and some explain things, and hopefully, we'll all be able to walk away at the end of the day, if not happy, at least understanding the situation and being able to feel like you've been treated fairly. I can assure you that is very important to all of us who sit up here on this dais. So do not be discouraged. It's just not customary that we discuss those things in open, but please understand that your comments did not go unheard, and we all heard them, and we all share your concern. And I think that's all I have, sir.
Yes, very, very well said. I know that public input portion is sometimes a challenging thing when you want it to be a, a dialogue, but that dialogue will be able to continue offline. School members, I don't know if you saw the, the email that the ethics training has gone live, so there's no reason to wait till December thirty-first to get your annual training done, although that makes for a very exciting New Year's Eve party. But here we are, October the ninth, and a big thanks to FADS for putting that out for us. That's a great opportunity for us to collect those four hours of ethics training as required by law every year. Any objections to adjourning? Not seeing any. Have a great night. We are adjourned.[1796.98][1796.98]